Okay, well then, I can wrap the and we can start.
Okay, you're all set.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, welcome everybody to our school committee meeting via Zoom on April 15. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and well, our first item is to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So John, if you could show us your flag. We will all stand up and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Right, okay. Great, thank you. So the next item is approving the minutes of April 1st. So has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting, which was a Zoom meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any, any concerns or amendments you want to make? All good? Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2020, please?
Second.
Right, so, and we, all in favor, and we do a roll call, is that right? Okay, so Shannon.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Julia, yes, okay, and Matt's absent. All right, we have an opportunity for public comment. As the next item, any of our public members want to comment? If you want to comment, just unmute yourself and okay. Right, okay, well then, let's go to the next section, which is reports for the school committee. So Dr. Antonucci.
Yeah, I actually don't have a report today, other than to say, you know, I just want to really thank everybody in the community for their patience and their hard work. I know, you know, we're all still adjusting a month later to what is this new normal. But I have to say, you know, when I look at what's happening out there in the world, I think Duxbury is doing a pretty good job. And it's not that we can't make improvements and we are constantly kind of tweaking our model and making adjustments as we need to, and it's still evolving. But I just have to say, our faculty and staff have really stepped up to the plate and as, as our, as have our parents. And so really, it's just a editorial comment that I'm really proud of everybody's efforts. It's really hard work and, you know, we're just, we're literally taking it day by day. And, you know, I know it's not perfect, but the situation continues to evolve. I almost feel like every half day. So, you know, we're going to make some mistakes and there's going to be some missteps. But overall, I think we should all be pretty proud of where we are. And I'll just leave it at that. So kind of thank you to everybody and anybody who may see this, this meeting, but we're doing okay.
Great, thank you. Right, Dr. Klingerman.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to share, I'm sure you probably have heard in the news by now, that Commissioner Riley from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education had put in a waiver from the federal government to be able to waive our MCAS requirement for the spring. And we've been waiting for weeks to hear the results of that. So we found out last Friday that the MCAS administration for the spring in grades three through 10 was canceled. So we don't have to worry about that, even if we do go back to school as of May 4th, which is what we're going with right now. There's going to be additional information forthcoming about students who maybe are trying to complete the competency determination for high school. So there will be further information about some aspects of MCAS, but our general spring administration has been officially canceled.
Yeah, great.
Danielle, just if you don't mind me following up on something you just said. We were on a call with the commissioner yesterday, and we do expect to hear some news either early next week, possibly as early as the end of this week, about whether or not they're going to extend the closure. We're, we're near certain that we're not going to be coming back on May 4th. I don't have any inside knowledge, but we're, that seems to be the consensus. Whether or not we come back at all remains to be seen. But in the next few days, we're hopeful that the governor is going to make an announcement. So we, we won't know, we might know 15 minutes ahead of the announcement, but beyond that, we'll, we'll let the community know as soon as we hear something.
Yeah, and just to kind of piggyback on that, if we do find out that the closure is extended and we have a later date, there's certainly many repercussions that that will cause. Well, we might not have a school committee meeting in between then, but certainly that's going to trigger us to look at the rest of the calendar and just a lot of the implications of what a further closure would entail. So more info to come on that.
Okay, great, well, we'll hold our breath for that. Okay, Mrs. Blake.
And so over the past several weeks, I've attended several meetings with the Department of Education and fellow school business officials where we have discussed numerous issues related to the school closures. And two of the more widely discussed issues relate to the pay treatment of our contracted services vendors, specifically in relation to student transportation. So our yellow bus and some of our special education transportation, and also some of that out of district tuition payments that we make. So under Mass General Law, we're limited to only paying for services once rendered. And given that we haven't received these services, under normal circumstances, we would not be able to pay or be obligated to pay. We have, however, received guidance from the Department of Education that we should continue to pay our vendors in order to ensure a continuation of services once we do return to school. But in order to do so, we may have to negotiate amendments to our existing contracts. So this is something that I've been working on, especially with our yellow bus service provider and some of our special education. We don't, we haven't finalized any agreement, so it's something that I'll continue to work on in future weeks. And I'll keep you updated on that process during our future school committee meetings.
Right. There have been some stories in the news lately, school districts saying that they're saving money or not spending money that they otherwise plan to spend, and then articulating some plan for spending it elsewhere. So it sounds as if we may not have much savings if we're directed to pay our vendors regardless.
Right, and I think it definitely depends on how long the school closure will continue. If it was just going to be savings, maybe some savings for the month of April, then it might be nominal. But if we have, if we're closed the remainder of the year, we could find some savings with our substitute coverage for the instructional materials that we're not purchasing for some of our utilities. So it's definitely, it's still something that's kind of to be determined, how much we could potentially have in savings. I will say that we have gotten some direction from the town finance director that it's just being, he's asked us to be mindful of our spending, that the spending is related to necessary services. So certainly, if we do have savings, we're not just turning around and spending those automatically. So, but definitely more information to come, kind of as we know how long the, the closure will extend. I think that will help us determine what the financial impact will be to the district.
Sure, okay.
There's also, Katie, just to follow up on that, there's also a potential piece of legislation, I think, that I heard discussed that we might be able to carry over funds from one fiscal year to the other, which currently can do, regional school districts can. There's a specific mechanism that allows them to do that, but normal K-12 districts can't. So I've heard that discussed, and here we do expect to see some saving for the things that Katie mentioned, like substitute teachers is a classic example, but we're not hiring substitute teachers right now, right? So we'll see what happens, but just again, that's a, that's evolving at the state level and we'll, as soon as we have some information, like Katie said, we'll, we'll try to make a plan and pass some recommendations for us.
Right. Katie, just to clarify, so the, it's contractual obligations? It's a set amount that we've encumbered or for special ed transportation and yellow buses?
Yes, so we have, for yellow bus, we have a daily rate for the number of buses, and that's all budgeted. And the same is true with special education. And it's the same thing, it's a daily rate depending on the route. But because for a number of days, school has been closed, so we haven't been receiving those services, technically, we're not really obligated to pay for them based on the contracts.
Right, right.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I just, before this meeting, Suzanne, you'll be happy to hear that I reviewed the warrant and signed it. So, one down. But, you know, that was really along my line of questions. Unfortunately, you know, the fallout of this is, you know, state and local fallout is, is coming. And the, the, the risk, the town has got significant financial risk. And I think if you listen to the selectmen discussing, I mean, like the beach revenue is a good example. There's millions of dollars potentially on the line. So I think John and Katie, as much as possible, close collaboration with the town. I would be really forlorn to see us keeping a transportation company afloat if our town is going to be under real financial duress. So I know you got to follow guidelines, but I would be looking at every opportunity to not pay for services that are not being delivered, because that's the, that's the world that we're in. So I think, I think that's going to be important for as much as possible collaboration to happen between the town and the school, because we can't operate in this environment as an isolated, you know, completely separate from the town finances, because there are going to be real pressure points.
Absolutely, and I just want to mention too, because our transportation vendor is one of the larger transportation vendors, I've been working collaboratively with other districts that do also contract with the same provider, just trying to really get some information too that will better help us make some difficult decisions in the future. And it's information on, on wages and information on some of the costs that these, these contractors are incurring. Because really, we should be, some of the costs, I don't want to be paying an invoice or paying a bill for costs that may contribute to a for-profit company's profit. So it's just really trying to get some of that information, listening to what the other towns are doing and making the best possible decision for the district.
Yeah, and if you think, as an example, the conversation we just went through, which was very painful, related to our pre-K and our extended day programming, you know, we had to furlough our employees. I feel a little uncomfortable that we're keeping special ed, you know, providers afloat at the expense, you know what I'm saying? It's just, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not rigid, right? And I'm not saying you need to be a fiscal hawk, but I think we have to be really sensitive that all of us, you know, are making really tough financial decisions. And, and what would be helpful, even if it's going to be an extended period, it would be helpful just to provide some guidance, because, you know, just quick three months of a school year, or even two months of the school year, non-contracted salaries still adds up to big numbers, right? So if those things are not being provided to us, I'd just love to have some visibility on as you work your way through that.
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Great, thank you. We haven't got our students with us. As chairman, I'm just appreciative of everybody's efforts to keep things going and that positive spirit that every, you know, the teachers and the parents and the students seem to bring to the table, because it's not easy being away. And the longer we're away, it becomes more difficult. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing and that your staff is doing.
Thank you.
So thank you. Okay, discussion items. There are some recommended modifications to grading policies at the middle school and high school, so.
Yeah, this is, this is really the purpose of needing to meet this week. Now that we're in this extended closure, school districts around the Commonwealth have been trying to figure out what to do with kids' transcripts and grading, you know, grades, et cetera. It's really a secondary issue, just because it's a little higher stakes, especially at the high school. So Jim, Donovan, and Sarah Maguire have done great work and have a presentation for you with our recommendation as to how we, we'd like to move forward, or at least a recommendation, one option.
Right.
Moving forward. So I'm going to share my screen and launch their presentation, but Jim and Sarah are going to be doing the talking. Does that sound good?
Yeah, sounds great.
Okay, just give me a sec here. I seem to have, here it is. Okay, Jim and Sarah?
All right, I'm going to start us off. This is Sarah speaking. I apologize if you hear some little voices in the background, naptime, just concluded in my home. So, John, if you want to go to that first slide for me, thank you. So we used a number of guiding principles as we tried to think about what would be appropriate in terms of some shifts we made, given this remote learning environment. Those guiding principles are listed here. So pretty fundamental to us was that this, you know, global pandemic not be a reason to harm any student in terms of their grading experience for the second half of the year. So do not harm was a fundamental guiding principle for us. It's also important that we recognize that this virtual learning or remote learning is not our brick and mortar learning environment. And so to, to attempt to replicate our school-based grading system doesn't, doesn't make sense in this virtual learning experience. So we have to make adjustments for that. We also are really cognizant of the fact that, looking forward to the next couple of months here, we wanted a solution that would be flexible to our return to school, but also flexible should the closure be extended. We didn't want to have to come and kind of revisit this whole thing and recreate the wheel, but rather have a solution that was flexible to both those scenarios. And Jim will speak to specifically at the high school, the elimination of final exams. So we go to the next slide. I'll just talk through the middle school solutions here that I'm proposing.
Sorry, Sarah.
That's okay. There we go. So what you can see here, I've broken into, I'm sorry, the next slide, John. There we go. Term three and term four information. So for term three, what I'm proposing is that we capture, for term three, learning that happened between the start of semester two, which was January 21st for us, and the last day before we closed, which was March 13th. And that any work that was assigned and collected within that window may be graded and included on Aspen for students averages. And that any work that was assigned prior to the closure, but not due until after we were in our closure period, not be included. The circumstances that kids were in, in terms of packing up their lockers and completing that work, are just so variable. We don't want a penalty for that experience. We also want to build in some time for students that maybe had some missing work or some assignments they wanted to make up to improve that term three average ahead of the closure. And so we're giving a window for students to be able to do that. That work will be accepted by their teachers. So we're looking at the end of the April break for that, to kind of close all those loose ends up. And then at the conclusion of term three, we're looking for students to make a decision to either take their term three average as it stands in Aspen, the number average, the grade average, or to choose to post a credit or no credit end of term three grade. For term four, we're looking at that, basically looking at our period of closure to the end of the school year, specific to when we put together our more formalized plan of remote learning. Each week, I'm proposing that our middle school teachers assign a credit or no credit grade for the week's learning during that period of closure. The teachers will accept late work, they'll provide feedback to students, and that we expect, again, that students are participating in all the learning provided. And that if we return to school, we will continue with this credit, no credit grading system. I suspect that a full week and get back in the building, but I suspect if we are able to, we'll be doing a lot of work to kind of pick up the pieces and put things back together. And so continuing with that credit, no credit grading, I think, captures the flexibility and support we'll need to have in that instance. And if we extend the closure, we would continue with the credit, no credit grading weekly through that period of closure. And that the term four grades, in totality, would be reported as credit or no credit for students. Should do, I could pause here for some questions, or if we want to wait till the end when Jim has given his high school proposal. I'm not sure what the better option is here.
Well, the question, one question I had was, what impact is, is this going to have or will it have any at all on placement for, for next year?
So that's a great question. For middle school students, we've actually, but prior to the closure, had been looking at a lot of our data to inform those recommendations and decisions. And so we had that, a lot of that done and did the work to populate that in Aspen. So students are actually going through course selection for next year as, as normal. And we've been able to proceed with that despite this.
Great.
Does that answer your question, Julia?
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, on to Jim.
Right, I just want to begin by thanking all of you for making time today for this. So for the high school, it's very similar. We, we follow the guidance from the commissioner pretty strictly. And so when we went into the period of closure on March 13th, we did not allow teachers to continue moving with the third quarter work in any way. And so now that we're, you know, where we are today, we, our recommendation is that we close the third quarter as of March 13th. And then that opens up a decision about whether or not we include it in the GPA or whether or not we, or, you know, we've included or not. And one of the issues that we looked at a lot, and we'll talk about a little bit more, is that the third quarter wasn't finished. We know in talk, from talking with teachers and students, that there was a lot of work left to be submitted at the end of the third quarter, large assessments, term papers, lab reports. And so the grades that are there in the third quarter are not representative of that entire period of time. However, the students had earned that grade up to that point. And so we do feel as though we, that the best option is to leave it to the students to decide whether or not they would like the grade that they had earned as of the March 13th to be included on their transcript. Or, yeah, if not, they could choose a credit, no credit designation somewhere to the middle school. Either way, the term three grades would not factor into a student's curriculum of GPA, because they were just so, it was just incomplete for everyone. And it's very difficult, I'll talk a little bit about it later, but when you start to include the quarter, the third quarter, and not the fourth quarter, you change the weighting of everything, which positively impacts some students, but negatively impacts others. So John, if you move to the next slide. For the fourth quarter, oh, excuse me. So the fourth quarter would begin as of March 30th. It would extend it to the last day of school. The work that was in the, we'll call the enrichment phase of this school closure would not be included in either quarter, because that was purely optional work for students. And beginning March 30th, excuse me, yeah, beginning March 30th, all of that work has been for credit. So the way it's working is our teachers are assigning the work on Monday. Kids have until Friday or longer, depending upon if there's power issues to submit that work. Teachers are providing feedback. Some teachers have been sending some work back that's incomplete or missing elements of the, of the assignment. Our teachers have been and will continue to be accepting late work. We know that there's a lot of variables present in families. We, a lot of our students have gone to work. We have high school students who are providing daycare services for families in towns, for families in town whose parents, because of their careers, are still essential and are going to work daily. And so we need to be flexible enough for our students. And so we are accepting late work. And our plan is that when we return to school, hopefully soon, that that credit or no credit will remain in place for the rest of, the rest of the school year. As I've written to parents every last couple of weeks, all of our students, our expectation is that for all of our students to do all the assigned work. And we are going to be reporting out on that work by assignment and not, subtle difference from the middle school, and not by week. And just like the third quarter, the fourth quarter will not count towards the GPA of a student. John, if you move forward to the next slide. For students who are in danger of not graduating or fail a course, you know, the commissioner has been very clear that we need to find pathways for those students to achieve their graduation or to move forward. And so how we're going about planning that is we're going to meet with the teachers and with the kids, and we're going in the guidance councils, and we're going to set up requirements for individual requirements for those kids to move forward. We expect that there'll be some students. There are always students every year who are in summer school for one way or another, and we have a threshold that we require kids have a minimum of a 55 to be able to enter summer school. That's, we're going to waive, we want to waive that requirement. Because of the, just the unique situation at the time, if a student earns credit in the second semester, that credit will push them forward to the next course in the sequence. The same is true for unweighted courses and for weighted courses. So unweighted being electives, PE courses, some electives within individual departments, but anything that's a graduation requirement, credit, if a student earns credit in that, they'll move forward in the sequence. And then I think one of, the one other GPA thing which is important to be mindful of is that our half-year courses and electives, they, because the designation will be credit or no credit as opposed to a grade, those courses will not be reflected in the GPA calculations for students at all. Because to do so would mean we'd have to establish a value for what credit meant. And those questions, which was something that as a school we examined, but assigning a value is a very, just a complicated process. Because if you establish a value for, excuse me, for unweighted courses, you also then have to establish a value for no credit, and that becomes a problem as well. And so moving forward, if we can, and so these decisions really come out of large conversations, or these recommendations really kind of large conversations within our district, but also with within our district, but also with schools up and down the, kind of the route through corridor. And then Sarah and I have been a part of conversations with principals all across the state in how to go about solving and address these issues. We gave very serious consideration at the high school to including the third quarter in the GPA calculation for all kids, if they chose to do it. The reality of that decision is, if we were to do that, it inflates the value of the first and second quarter, and it inflates the value of the mid-year exam. And while that is a potential benefit for some students, it also would negatively impact other students. And once, so because the solution wasn't inequitable, we're not recommending moving, moving, because that option was inequitable, we're not recommending that. It's the solution that we adopt as a school. But we spent many, many hours going through the ramifications of those, of that scenario. And I'd be happy to take questions.
I'm going to stop the share. For now, I can go back if we need to.
So it's, it sounds as if you're, for the high school, your steps are kind of in sync with what other districts are doing in the area, so.
Yeah, I mean, there are, we are in sync with a number of districts in the area and also across the state. Some districts made the decision to try to finish the third quarter, and it ignored the guidance from the commissioner early on about having it only be essential work. And so that was something that we did not do to start that a week ago when we entered this new phase seemed impractical.
And so will this explanation accompany transcripts that go out when students say are applying to post-secondary education?
Absolutely. Yeah. Mrs. Dabowski, maybe you can speak a little bit more about what I.
I was just going to say, part of our school profile is to do the grading policy, and so I would foresee that being another section that becomes part of that. And I do know that some admission deans have already started reaching out, asking if we would, as school districts, let them know once they, once we have developed grading policies to let them know that. So I think they're starting to log that already.
Great, great. Okay, thanks.
Um, yeah, so.
Go ahead, Peter.
No, you go, Kelly.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm thankful that you're giving students the choice of taking their third quarter grades as is, so they can be on the transcript if they want them. Because you, we all are really left in a sort of choiceless situation, so that, that's one great thing. My only, I guess, comment or concern, you know, I've heard from parents who think we're giving too much, we're not giving enough, you can never make everybody happy. You know, I have a sixth grader and an 11th grader, and my girls do an inordinate amount of work. Like, they take it serious like at school. So going from grades to credit, no credit, I just hope we don't see kids slacking off. And I know that there's really nothing we can do about it, but that's just the one thing that I thought of when I looked at it. You know, you're always going to have your students who want to excel and learn to go on to the next level, but we already have chosen classes for next year. They're all in there. You know, levels that the teachers chose for them, recommended levels. So that's sort of, you know, I don't know how that's going to be monitored. Just the quality of the work. And Jim, I like, I think you said, or maybe Sarah, you said, it's going to be assignment by assignment instead of whether it was all done or not. So does that mean the, the students will be getting individual feedback?
Yes. So at the high school, we have been working with Aspen to develop a, one of the, one of the issues we've had over the last two weeks, which you and other parents who are here have certainly experienced, is that we have to basically reconfigure Aspen to allow us to do this credit, non-credit determination. And so everything's been living in school g. And so once we can do that, all that information will live in Aspen where people are used to looking for it. And then you'll get, at the high school, you'll get, kids will be able to know, and parents will be able to see what work has been created, and then get feedback on the work. But we've had, we've had to examine how to reconfigure the grade book, because in our current configuration, you know, it's meant for grades, one to, you know, essentially one to 100 on every assignment. And so if you put in a 100, well, then that becomes an actual numeric average, which then begins to pump itself out. So we've tried to figure out how to separate, or reconfigure the grade book, so that we, that people aren't trapped looking at numbers and thinking it's computing as an, as an average. But we will be providing that feedback.
Right.
And we are working on finding, finding the appropriate amount of work that's manageable and also achieves our goals. And I think that that's been an adjustment, certainly for kids, but it's also been an adjustment for the adults in our teaching staff.
Well, right. I, I think the workload has been manageable, but a student has to put in a full day for it. And, and I'm in a fortunate situation where I'm here, I'm with my kids, I'm not at work, I don't have a toddler. But I know parents in homes with different situations, it's been really difficult, or special ed situations, or the whole gamut, as you all know. So I think the work has been fair.
Kelly, I agree with you, and I, I think we'd be having a much different conversation if we could guarantee that every student had the same opportunity and kind of equitable opportunity at home for support or time or whatever it is, and we just can't. And, you know, in a perfect world, we'd love to continue grading. We looked at it 100 different ways, and we just, I mean, when equity is your driver, there was just no way to make it happen. I mean, people, if there's been any consistent feedback, it's that people are a little overwhelmed and just don't have, don't have the access that other people might have. So anyway, I agree with you 100%. You know, I know some kids are going to take advantage of the credit, no credit, but I think that's a, that's just something we have to live with, you know, in hopefully a once-in-a-lifetime situation.
Could I just add too, we're working really hard to provide that feedback on all ends of the spectrum in terms of accessing the learning that we're providing. So, you know, on the one end, with our students that are looking for more, we're trying to provide that to them and communicate with them. On the other end, we have teachers reaching out to individual students saying, you know, you did these parts of the learning, but you didn't hit these parts, let's circle back. And then between our guidance department and Mrs. Coyne and myself, we've been also reaching out to families that we haven't heard from at all, and trying to work with them and make sure we're supporting those scenarios where it's really challenging to kind of manage all these moving parts right now. And so, you know, if any, anybody's watching this meeting or listening, I would invite that if there's some sort of circumstance that's creating a barrier for you with any of this, that you just reach out, and we'll work with you and provide that support. I think that's really, really important that people hear that too with all of this is the spectrum of experience right now is significant. And so we're trying to work with families on that, too.
Yeah. So, you know, what I, Jim and Sarah, and also John and Danielle, and everyone who's worked together on this, what I love about it, it's 100% consistent with our strategic plan, our values, the pillars and the priorities that we've outlined for our community and our school district. And and, you know, 17 million Americans have lost their jobs in the last three weeks, and we're just getting started. So if any parent feels that this proposed go-forward plan disadvantages their students, they just really need to gain some perspective. I think this is very student-centric. It's student-first. It's providing the students with what we should be providing them with, every opportunity to continue to learn, but don't disadvantage them with additional pressure and stress over stuff that really none of our students have any control over, you know? So I'm thrilled. I think it's a wonderful reflection of our values and the priorities that you've emphasized to put students first, think of the well-being of our students, and a fractional change of GPA in a what-if scenario, if someone really was going to smoke their third term, just has no context or no perspective in this situation that our families and our students are facing. So I'm thrilled. I think it's fantastic. I also have a 17-year-old, who I think officially this means senioritis is starting now. So I can tell you, if I shared this plan with my 17-year-old, he'll be very enthusiastic, and I'm sure he'll work very hard. It won't matter. But the reality is, I think this is consistent with our values, our strategic plan, and I'm thrilled that you've, you've, you've kept students first. I think that's wonderful. So anyhow, thank you. I think it's, I think it's fantastic. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on that topic?
Jim and Sarah, just one quick final thing. Just, you plan to roll this out to families in the next couple of days?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I ask one other question? Are Jim and Sarah, are you hearing from parents, or is it just, is, is it, is anybody hearing from parents one way or another?
Yes.
Okay.
About, about what?
Workload, grades, anything, stress?
Yes.
I think Mrs. Dabowski's taken more of those phone calls for the high school than I have.
Yeah, sure.
But I have been in communication with some parents for sure, and definitely some kids have, I've talked with a lot of kids over the last couple of weeks.
Okay. Yeah, Lisa, I did see you sent out a really nice email earlier this week, just all about the students and hope you're okay. Meaning you're just phenomenal. So, thank you, everyone, and keep up, keep up the great work for our kids.
Mrs. Shannon, can I ask a logistical question?
Of course.
Are we, are we voting on this? At all?
Uh, yes, we are. Do you want us to vote now?
Yes, please. I need to hang up at 4:00. I apologize, but I just want to make sure I get the vote in before that. That's okay.
Sure. You're all right to do that, Dr. Antonucci?
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Okay. So why don't I ask for, could I have a motion to accept the recommended modifications to the high school and middle school grading policy?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? So Shannon?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Okay, Kelly?
Aye.
And Julia, yeah? So that's good. Okay, so we're all set.
Great.
So the, the other discussion item is the first reading of the revisions or revised social media policy for Duxbury Public Schools. So does someone want to lead us off on that?
I will.
Yeah.
So Danielle and I co-chaired the digital literacy committee this year. We had 16 members, administrators, teachers from all four schools. Matt Gambino is the school committee representative, and two parent reps, Tom Godden and Martha Dennison. The first thing that we had done is we reviewed the new tech plan at the beginning of the year. And then we set goals. And the goals came out of the new tech plan, which was built on the strategic plan. And one of the goals that we focused on was the drafting DPS social media policy. So a lot of our work this year has been focused on that. So the first thing that we did was, we talked about social media, and we looked at plans that other districts had, looking to see what we liked and what we didn't like. Some of them were really long, some of them were short. And we made a list of what we liked and what we didn't like. And then we also read some articles about creating a social media policy for a school district. And, and what, what was important in those articles for us to include? So then, in, after we did all that work, in January, we created an outline of the things that we wanted in ours. We wanted to have a purpose statement, and we worked out a draft purpose statement. And then we wanted to have acceptable use information within it. And we also wanted to look at both guidelines for students and guidelines for employees. So we took those guidelines and lists of what we liked and didn't like, and what we should have in the policy. And we put that together in a draft policy. So it's the policy that, and we presented it in our March 9th meeting. And people went away and they, they read it, they made some comments on it, and then when they went home, they could also comment on the Google Doc. And so about two weeks ago, Danielle and I went through and read it, addressed the comments. And so you have the final draft in front of you. And it, it basically goes right through, it's, the purpose is, and then acceptable use, and then what we expect of students and what we expect of teachers. So you have that document, correct? Yeah. Okay.
How is this different than what we had before? Is it completely new, or?
The, we didn't actually have a social media policy per se. There was a, there was an old one that was taken out of, lifted from the Massachusetts guidelines, but it included other things besides social media. And over the past five or six years, social media has gotten, is, had grown tremendously within the district. Probably mostly at the administrator and some teacher levels. But teachers are also starting to use it with children in the classroom, and we wanted to set guidelines about what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. So making sure that your personal social media account is different than your school professional media account. And just giving them guidelines about what to do best, so that they know what to do ahead of time, rather than get caught on something.
Right. Yeah, thank you.
Julia, I believe there might have been a social media policy discussion several years back at school committee before Dr. Antonucci or I were here, but it didn't appear that it ever made it into the policy manual. It was kind of just like on the outskirts. So we weren't sure that a vote ever took place to put that officially in place. And so as Cheryl mentioned, the social media policy that we think had been tossed around a few years back was directly from the Massachusetts School Committee Association sample of the policy for social media. So this kind of just built upon that. And also, I think Cheryl already mentioned, we want to make sure that any staff that are currently, that currently have personal accounts set up using their Duxbury address are clear that they can, should adjust that, because that would be a school-affiliated account when they use their Duxbury Public School address. So we needed to kind of clear that up because of the public records complications of social media use.
Yeah, I think my memory is exactly as you say, that we had, we had a MASC kind of policy, but it was, our focus seems to always have been around how the students use social media without really addressing how staff use it. And so I was glad to see that that is a kind of major portion of this new policy.
Exactly. I've been asking for a social media policy since I became technology director because, because I want to have the guidelines in place as we move forward, rather than having something happen and, and and not have guidelines in place. And they are legal documents, so we needed to have a policy in place. So we've got one now, which is good.
Great, thank you.
I'm really happy Cheryl in committee with how thorough they are. Because as Danielle knows, I've been asking for a social media policy for a couple of months just because of the blurred lines between, I mean, some kids are seniors, junior seniors in high school and they're close in age to staff. And so, you know, I think it's really good that it's been clarified. And I am pleased with the two separate sections. You know, because I have girls who love to be on social media, so they shouldn't be using their school laptops for anything but schoolwork. You know, I think it's, it's really well thought out and articulated perfectly clearly. So thank you.
Okay. I'm just looking at the policy that was put in the folder, the draft policy today. We were having some formatting issues and the numbering was all fixed at one point. And I'm looking and I'm seeing a lot of ones that should be right, one, two, three, four, et cetera. So if you just, when you're doing your first read of this, if you notice any numbering errors, that's something we will certainly address on the final draft.
Great, thanks. Okay, so this will be our, our first reading of this policy and then we'll, we'll vote on it next time we convene. Is that right?
Yeah. And we'll make, it'll, it'll be posted on the school committee section on the website with all the meeting materials. So it's there for public consumption if people want to go take a look at it.
Great, great. Okay. Any other comments on social media policy before we wrap up? No, we're good. Okay. Well, thank you very much, everybody for coming together and thank you for all your work on the grading policy and the social media policy. Those are really important, clearly. So yeah, thank you very much and we'll we'll just have another meeting when you need us to, right?
Yeah, I, I sort of TBD at this point, but I, I'm, I'm certain that we're going to need to come together sooner rather than later. So I appreciate the flexibility. I mean, this is not normally how we do business as far as scheduling these meetings with such short notice. But given the circumstance, I think we're going to have to just be flexible moving forward. So I do appreciate everybody, everybody's willingness to, to make this happen today.
Great, thank you. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Do we need a motion?
Thank you.
We need a motion to adjourn, sorry.
Don't move.
All in favor, or second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.